Hi, how you doing? It's like, nice to meet you. This, this is on Mason. No, no, it well it is.
Okay, I call order committee meeting Monday, April 29th, 7:00 PM. Laura, would you please call the board?
Peters.
Here.
Holtz.
Here.
Sorella.
Here.
Revolt.
Here.
Eastland.
Here.
Waring.
Here.
Plankton.
Here.
Senator.
Thank you. All right, first up, finance and property chairwoman, Waring.
So tonight, we're gonna have a presentation from Jobs Controls and they had asked that they could come up last week and we didn't know we had a lot of questions and such, so I think this is a great way for us to really see what they can offer and do and then we'll ask our questions. Is that good?
Yes.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. And I'm, my name is Cheska Wilson, I'm with Jobs Controls. This is Vince Lehman, he is our development engineer. He's actually lives twenty minutes from here. He's been working with us on this project for, since, I think started in October, so, working with Patrick and administration. And then this is Zach Thomas, our sales manager, I think you met him at the watch meeting. So I want to first thank you for having me here tonight and thank you for your thoughtful consideration of the project over the last couple council meetings. I've listened, I've been here and listened to last week's on, online, on YouTube and I guess I want to walk you through where we've been over the last six months. I'm gonna try to do it as fast as I can, take you on the six month journey in ten minutes. So if you have any questions during, please just ask, so I can clarify things. So real quick, high level, who is Jobs Controls? We are a manufacturer of building equipment. We make HVAC, building controls, fire suppression, firearms, security systems. Basically, we're a full service provider. We specialize in smart buildings and smart cities. Actually, go back. We've been in business since 1985. We've been here in Ohio for over a hundred years. We have, right now, we have $192 million worth of active guarantees in the state. So we have a vast number of customers that we've been worked with, that we have worked with. And that's more business than any other company has in the state of Ohio. There's a list of our, some of our references on the left also. And over the years, these types of projects have generated over 6,000 jobs in the state of Ohio. This is a performance infrastructure program. It's legislatively enabled through ORC 717.02. And it allows, it was created in 1985 and it's meant to allow cities to upgrade their infrastructure, their buildings, their lighting, through energy and operational savings. So it's a physically responsible model. It's, you leverage your existing budget and you try to do it in a budget neutral approach. So you're redirecting dollars from the utility company back into the city's customers to pay off the cost of the project. Our number one goal in any project is to eliminate the city's risk. So in typical construction events, customers see four to nine percent change orders of the cost of project in change orders. We guarantee there will be no change orders. We guarantee the installation cost once we develop that. We also guarantee the performance of the project, meaning we work with the city during the development with the end in mind. So what are your goals? And then when the project is complete, we want to achieve those goals. We're not gonna value engineer out those key elements. We guarantee the savings. So when we present the contract with the installation cost, we also present projected savings and those are guaranteed and backed by Jobs Controls. And then measured and verified over the length of the project. This is a list of some typical improvements that we do all day, every day across the country. Here, in this project, we're focusing on lighting, boiler replacement, chiller replacement, windows, and the water treatment, sludge rest. So some of these items have a quick payback period. Some of them have a longer payback period, meaning they generate less savings over time. The question, I heard the question asked at one point, can the city self-implement some of this work? Yes, I mean, the city could self-implement some of the LED lighters, some of these projects. But the beauty of this program, or the reason that the legislation was created, is to capture the savings generated from the lighting, for example, and apply it to a heavier lighting item like a, like a chiller. So that way, you're taking a proactive approach, a physically responsible approach, and you're not being surprised in two years when the chiller fails and now you have to tap into your capital budget to fix it. This is our process, our steps. I'm gonna walk through these to show you where we've been and where we're going. So we started with utility bill analysis. We looked at the, all the city-owned buildings, your spend, your gas and water spend over a 12-month period. And one thing really jumped out at us, which is the city hall was operating, or is operating, at $4.12 a square foot, which is fairly high for a building this type of usage and stage. You would typically see it around a dollar, a dollar fifty. So there's a big opportunity for savings in that building, in this building. The next step was to actually walk those facilities and see is there a physical, chemical pathway to achieve that delta, those savings. We presented to the city opportunities, or to the administration, opportunities at all of these buildings and the administration decided to focus this project on the city hall, the streetlights, and the water treatment plan. So the next step was to present our findings of the feasibility study. And these are preliminary numbers, okay? This is an, is it possible check? And the answer is yes. The general fund project would include upgrades of the city hall, LED lighting, lighting controls, a boiler replacement, a chiller replacement, building management system, window improvements, weather stripping, and completing the conversion of the streetlights to LED. All of those items can generate 1.4 million in savings over a 20-year period. And the estimated cost of the project is $900,000. So when you factor in the cost of financing, it does self-fund and actually produces a positive cash flow of about $10,000. On the enterprise side, Vince, you wanna, you did walk all of the buildings, but you wanna specifically talk about the water treatment plant upgrades?
Sure, so on the water treatment side of things, we've been out to look at the plant. And the really good news for you is, you're doing a great job. The people you have out there running there are doing a fantastic job. So cats on, because I don't always see that and I go out and take a look at these things. So as we went through, we started looking at kind of bigger picture, a little more, I don't see necessarily anxiety, but a little bit, I don't even care what kind of things to do and ways to help out. And one of the things that came to light is just the way you're transporting and you're dealing with your sludge. And I know there's been some discussion that you've had, you know, over a period of time, and kind of where to go from there. You know, Mark and the rest of the people out there kind of had an idea of what they wanted to do and how they wanted to deal with the sludge. And using a press type of approach to de-water that and make it frankly, significantly less expensive to go ahead and dispose of. And in fact, an opportunity actually exists that you may be able to take, can't promise this right now, but you may be able to take and actually recoup money from that and actually sell the material. We've done that in some other locations and we'll investigate it here. Can't promise it, I gotta make sure I can find the buyer first. But there may be an opportunity to do that. So in essence, you know, doing some continuation of some lighting work out there and dealing with, with a installation of sludge press and all the peripheries that go along with that probably would be a good thing to do and in fact, would be a strong recommendation from us. I know, Mark, I think you brought some materials here for me to show and tell. I don't know if you want to look at those right now, but you can kind of see what they're working on.
Yeah.
Handouts of sledge. First of all, I'd like to say this is the way we send it to the sludge lagoons out back. Five ponds we have out back. This is about 5% solids. You see how it settles out? And this water here on the top, which is called supernate, can be recaptured and sent back to the head of the plant for reuse. And that will happen in the sludge.
We don't do that now?
No.
Okay.
We do not. We, we could and we used to, but it is ground under the influence of surface water because the pond is not covered. So we will be able to recover this once, if you put in a sludge press. Just to show you what we're dealing with now, we currently have five ponds that are completely full. This is about three weeks drying time in the sludge lagoon. After it's been sent out at this, it's, this is about three weeks drying time, which is probably only 20, 25% solids. It's mostly water, it's like pudding. I snuck over to Aqua today and stole some of their filter cakes off of their press. This is what it ends up. It presses it into big sheets, about an inch thick, two meters by two meters. And it drops out of the belt press on the bottom and shatters on a hard surface. And then they have an auger that breaks it down into the smaller cakes. And that's how the farmers love it on the back end because they use the sling feeders to spread it on their fields. And I know for a fact we can get rid of it in that form as compared, because basically we have to send it back to this form. We liquefy it all without the tanker truck and spread it on the farmer's fields currently. So we're basically paying to haul the water back out. That's where it becomes inefficient and expensive. And ponds are always full. Our windows every year seem to keep closing. You have a month in the spring and a month in the fall to get rid of it? Or the farmers go after that because the fields are too wet or their crops are planted? And that window gets smaller and smaller, it seems like every year, like last winter, they couldn't come back at all because it was too wet to get desserts.
And no problem with farmers wanting to buy.
Not at that point, you know.
There's a demand for this.
There's a demand that way, but not this way. It's getting harder and harder to get rid of it.
I'd like to show it up, thank you.
So yeah, so you can see by doing that, I've really taken opportunity to take something that is costing the city money to get rid of by hauling away and eliminating some of the problems with filling up your basins and things like that, to turning it into something that can readily be disposed of at, at no cost, which we know exists today, to the potential to actually turn it into a revenue source. And that, that's a golden opportunity for you to work with and something we'd be excited to work with you on.
So these numbers here, project cost is estimated right now at 2.2 million. Project could generate 3.7 in savings. That's just reducing your hauling fees. That's, there's upside to that. That doesn't include actually selling the product. So there is upside to the, the revenue stream. And factoring in cost of financing, it would, right here alone would generate $480,000 in positive cash flow over the term. The legislation requires procurement, right? Competitive bidding. There's two ways to do that, through an RQ process or cooperative purchasing agreement. The administration chose to do a cooperative purchasing agreement, which allows the city to get the very best price across the board on the project. In 2017, this was, this type, this energy services program was nationally bid. They had 61 firms who were part of the selection process. Five were shortlisted, three were selected, and Jobs Controls was number one. City of North Canton has been a member of Sourcewell since 2007 and that's your member ID right there. And so this is, this meets the competitive procurement requirements in the legislation. So the next step is to move into project development. This is where we are today, looking at a project development agreement. It's included in the, in the attachments that you have received. And this is basically our cost to engineer, design the project. We're not in the business of engineering projects. We, we want to actually manage the installation for you. So we're just showing you this cost upfront, but that cost is actually rolled into the total cost of the project, the 3.2 million. So it, the city's allocating it right now, but it's not actually going to come out of pocket. It's going to be part of that self-funding 3.2 million dollar project. And then at the, the outcome of the project design and development, it's typically about a three-month process. So Vince and I would come back to council in August or September timeframe with a final design and a breakdown. We would present to the administration a breakdown of costs and savings and ROI for the items. And then the city has the information to make a informed decision on what scope items they want to include, what makes sense to include in that final project. So there's a lot of flexibility that the city has over the next three months in working with us to actually design the final project. And that's what we're doing in September. And finally, we present the contract. Like I said before, that, that contract has a guaranteed installation cost, guaranteed savings. And Jobs Controls manage the installation. We try to use local labor as much as possible. And we, we bid out the subcontracts to ensure that we get the best price. And we manage the subcontracts throughout the project, the installation. And we are responsible for ensuring that it's complete on time and under budget. And the final step is measurement and verification, which is, once the project is installed, we measure your savings quarterly. And typically, we report those savings to you on a annual basis. And if there are any shortfalls, we pay them on an annual basis. So I hope that answered some of the questions. I'm sure there's still more questions out there. I guess I'll open it up.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So like, when you look at the scope of the project, it sounds like the biggest cost is the sludge compressor, whatever you wanna call it. And I think I read somewhere that the city already identified what system they want to use, is that correct?
Yes, it, it actually makes it a lot easier as we put the project together. You know, in talking to Mark, I've looked at a number of different types of systems to work with. We discussed that back and forth as far as what, you know, I've seen and what, what my team has seen in various situations. And quite frankly, we agree that the press is the most cost-effective, the easiest way to implement, and the one with the best life cycle cost, long-term cost versus low maintenance. And what that does for us, when we do the development, is instead of having to go through the process of putting all of that together and doing test projects where we bring in the different technologies, trying out, see what everything looks like, we're able to just move right into the final design of the use of the press and all the ancillaries with it, the piping, the buildings, the conveyors, all that stuff with it. And helps keep that overall engineering cost down as far.
Is it 2.2 million without financing? Is that the raw cost to do the project?
Yes.
Okay. So, so here was my thinking. So we have lighting, the building, which seems like this is kind of a high priority because of the four and a half dollars or whatever you said was the house. The thing I was, this is just me thinking out loud, just being an entrepreneur and thinker.
Sure.
Is 3.2 million, if I had mentioned one, I had the money, I had to say, let's do it. I just always look at the financing cost over 20 years. Yeah, I look at the longevity of the product and that, and that's how I always think about it. That's why I mentioned probably cost plus versus cost neutral. And so the thing, the way I look at it is, is that if I spent 1.2 million in financing, that could pretty much take care of a lot of these smaller projects. So I didn't know if there was a way that we could phase it in over time or does it all have to be done together? Is it more cost-effective to do it together? I mean, because I, I look at this more like capital improvement type things overall. And I always like to say, I mean, I think we have a reserve fund that Laura has. It'd just be great if we could somehow get some money in the reserve fund and, and then just maybe see what the breakdown of these projects are and take a bite at a time. I mean, I think it's wise to know what priority you think it should be based on your expertise and then we can just kind of execute it one by one. I just, in my mind, it's hard for me to get around to 1.2 in financing. That, that's my personal feeling. I think it's a good idea, I just, the money is what, it's like a, you know, like if it's bricks and mortar, I'd feel better.
Sure.
Versus like, you know, other things. And that, that's just my thought, I don't know what everybody else thinks about it, but.
And, and I guess the answer to what, yes, hold a lot of stuff in there. So the simple answer is yes, you can phase things, okay? Is it more expensive to phase them? It depends how you phase them. And the other thing that you need to be aware of is that through the legislation and as you phase certain things, you can only take the savings for that phase. So you don't want to do all the stuff that pays for itself very quickly today and then take five years downward or two years downward or whatever and do, you know, additional work at that point because you already captured that savings and applied it to that first phase. So as you look at this, and that's part of, of what we do when we do the development side of things, is we give you that information. And not only do we say, you know, what everything is, is gonna cost and what the savings impact is, but what is the relationship between that? So as we put the development together, you'll have the opportunity to say, well, you know what? Maybe I should do this and not do this kind of scenario. Not only will we say to you, okay, it's gonna take this month, this many dollars out of the project, but we'll also say this is the impact that you're gonna have on savings associated with the project and, and resulting change in financing. What does the big picture look like? Does that answer?
Yeah, I, I mean, just for me, it's just a matter of, you know, I always like to pay as I go as best we could, you know, instead of financing it in. These are things that are capital improvements that should be in the budget anyhow, but they're probably not. Maybe that's something to be done on the road, you know, with the fund I mentioned. But I would just like to see if we paid for the engineering, get the blueprint to see, you know, so we can prioritize it to figure out the most efficient way to spend the money. Because again, these things might be over the next three years or four years to do the whole package. Maybe with the sludge plant, maybe the water, you know, we've got a few of those, water, you know, a few water lines to replace. Maybe we need to lay a couple of those and just pay for it, you know, out of fund. So those are the things, I could just go through my mind.
Couple of things I'd like, I want to make sure you understand if you go through and do this. When we put our engineering fees together, the 96,000 to develop all of this, okay? As I mentioned earlier, excuse me, or Cheska mentioned earlier, we do this kind of in a teaming arrangement. So the cost to engineers, since we don't sell engineering studies and we don't, that's not where we make our money, that's, it's significantly less than what you're gonna see if you go out and you hire a consulting engineer to engineer and design all of this. The reason that we're able to do that is not because we're just nice people, because we gotta run a business. But the reason that we do it is, is the methodology that we use when we put it together. So we do it in a teaming type of arrangement. So we're working with you to set priorities. As we're doing the design, we're working with the contractors that are giving us prices on the equipment and negotiating with them as we put this together. So the drawings that we put together are not 100%, you know, construction drawings with a spec this big and, you know, 70 pages of drawings with it. We do things that are more along the lines of schematic, design development, pre-construction kind of things, and, and move forward until we get, you know, the commitment that this is exactly what the scope is gonna look like. And, and that would, that would come in the September timeframe when we come back to you. And then we do the final engineering piece associated with that to get everything done. So I, I don't want to leave you with the impression that we're gonna come back in August and hand you a set of prints and drawings if you can just take out and bid to somebody because that's, that's not what we do.
So, so basically, the products that we would be using are from the subsidiary companies? But basically, it's your product line, your other companies, which would fund everything and supply everything for us, pretty much? And then you just use local contractors to try to sharpen the pencil so to speak?
Yeah, a little bit, I mean, so, a little bit of that. So what will happen with it is, you know, as far as the manufacturers and the suppliers, we will work with them and through our purchasing arrangements, because we put in thousands of these around, around the country, and millions of lights and things like that, we can get that purchase price down a little bit as we go. We can also go through and work with the contractors. And as they do this, we said there's no change orders. And the reason there's no change orders is because of all the communication that goes on. Everyone clearly understands what's going on. That does two things. It eliminates the change orders, but it also goes through and it lowers the overall price for the installation of things. Because now, as a contractor is looking at this, they're not saying, well, I think you meant this, so I'm gonna put this in and then I'm gonna throw a 25% contingency on top of that because I'm not 100% sure. Well, when they do that, they never see that contingency. When we're, when we go through and do this, we're able to do it without getting that into the deal. So it's kind of a mixture all of that.
So, so the 20% contingency I saw in the agreement is a preliminary thing that?
Yes.
It just says until we sharpen our pencil and figure out, well, who's on first, basically? And then you can get the 20% down to 3%, 5%?
To zero.
Zero's better.
Yeah, that's what we want to.
Okay, so those are basically my questions. I don't want that opens up any ideas here across the. Thank you. That's basically the answer.
I had to follow up with, so what you're saying here, and the large expenditure here obviously is the sludge press. So we have money coming out of the enterprise fund, which is the water fund, obviously, $66,708, I think, or near that, is going towards these project costs to pay you. You're saying if that sludge press costs $2.2 million to install, that's not normal? Or am I misunderstanding something? We don't have any more engineering into this other than what you have identified is which sludge press to use?
That's correct.
The 2.2.
Okay, so.
The 2.2 million would cover the engineering costs that 66,000. It covers any costs associated with M&amp;B, with final design, with everything. That is, yeah.
So if we were to, we're not just hiring a consulting engineer ourselves, they would charge us obviously to design a sludge press, or whatever other fees. I, I don't know what the going rate is, but I think that's something we need to look at to compare it at example. Excuse me? 10%, you're looking at $220,000.
Well, don't forget the 60, well, I assume you have a 90 for the other, but if to combine, then there's no guarantee.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I'm trying to evaluate this in a way, if they're not involved, how do we show our taxpayers that this is a god savings to us? For us to vote for this? And then the other question I have is your facility improvement measures. Who comes up with that? Is that your scale of measurement or is it something we sit down with our administrative people and decide how this works?
You know, so, the, the, what do you mean by facility?
Well, it's in, it's right here in the proposal.
So the list, the list of specific items, what, what you see in front of you is a list of items that on a preliminary walk through, we saw as opportunities. As we move into the next phase of this, then we work with your administrative team and we join them and put that together. So we'll make recommendations and we'll say this is what we see and what we think is, is a need from our perspective. We'll take information from your administrative team to say, you know, here's something that we've been wanting to do that we haven't done that we didn't see because quite frankly, you live in the buildings every day, we see them in a window of time, so we need that interaction. And then the administrative team, along with your assistants, would then prioritize two things. One, you know, I guess what needs to be done, what is included in the project, and, and kind of how we put the mix of everything together. So it's a joint effort between the both of us.
And if those fall short of our expectations with you designing this with us, what happens then?
Then if it falls short from a perspective of performance, like operation, then for example, we go through and we mentioned the chiller. I size a chiller and the chiller needs to be increased by 20% in size. I have to replace it with a chiller 20% larger at no cost to you. That's what I mean by no change order, period. And that applies to everything I'm doing, lighting, lighting. And that applies to everything I'm doing, lighting levels, everything. Um, the second part is a performance guarantee from the savings perspective. So I say to you that you're going to save twenty thousand dollars a year and you save fifteen thousand dollars a year. I'm required to write you a check for the five thousand dollar difference.
Okay, that's going to be spelled out in legalese or contract language and we're going to vote on it and that's basically.
Yeah, we have a contract that's to fill it all around.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How many times have you had to write a check?
Okay, so we have had to write checks. So as we go through and do this, our company, and I, I'm going to boast a little bit. Our company's policy is, our goal is to be about roughly three percent misses on projects on our total portfolio. Um, right now, um, myself and my team have a hundred and forty-seven million dollars a year annual guarantees that we're responsible for. Well, our misrate right now is point nine eight seven percent as of six months ago. So we do write checks. But it, because, because what happens is, I'm coming into a building and I'm estimating what things are going on and I'm presuming the way that they were, I've been doing this for thirty years, so I have some experience with it, but I'm not perfect. But we stand behind it when we're not perfect. And that, I mean, it doesn't matter what the size of the check is, we'll be here to write it. And if it doesn't work, we'll be here to fix it. And all that you would hear, if we undersize something, if we miss something in the, in the concept of the design, because we might need an extra month or we might need an extra couple of weeks or we might need whatever to get the installation done, that's not going to cost you anything anymore. That's why I do this as opposed to consulting a engineer.
Go ahead.
Let me turn the, uh, discussion on its head for a moment. Did Johnson Control install the, uh, sludge press at Aqua Hot in Masslin?
No, we didn't.
Do we have any idea of that project's success in selling the line case?
At Aqua?
Yeah.
No, because I, I wasn't involved, that project, our team wasn't, so I'm not sure what they did with that.
I guess where I'm petted with this is that YouTube's a beautiful thing. You can watch it.
I'm sorry.
YouTube, YouTube's a beautiful thing. You can, you can watch it, uh, watch it in operation. Right now, we spend about a hundred and five thousand dollars a year on average hauling line. So my question is, am I going to have a hundred, how much of that hundred and five thousand dollars are we going to have in savings if we would install this sludge press? Apparently we've got one right down the road, but what we really don't know is how efficient, effective it is.
The one down the road?
Yeah, right over here in Masslin Hot.
And, I mean, I, I'm not willing to even say what they did because I haven't worked on it and I didn't put it together. And I mean, I don't want to go into questioning their decline as far as.
I guess, I guess what I'm really asking is, we're arguing that this press is going to save us money.
Yes.
Correct?
That's correct.
The argument is that after the raw product is converted to cake, it has marketed value. Question. In Masslin, where they use this very piece of equipment that you've described and type that we probably recommend that we use, my question is, how much of that line gets sold to farmers?
I don't know how much they sell to farmers because it's, it's different for everyone. So my savings that I'm projecting, as Justin said, does not have the amount of money in there that we're, that we can sell it to farmers with. The amount of savings projections that we get listed are the savings that you're getting on disposal. So what happens is right now, I'm correct, I'm wrong, Mark, but right now, if it can be converted to cake, the hauling fees that you have right now
Are diminished.
Would, I'm sorry?
Are diminished.
I believe they're eliminated, are they not?
Aqua still has a small trucking fee that they still pay Edgar Sludge.
Right.
But it is minimal. And they might be able to eliminate that if they tried harder. I talked to him for an hour and a half this morning, one kind of like phrase on the phone.
So what I've done, again, because these are preliminary and I'm wanting to make sure that I'm not overpromising things, is I've taken ninety percent of your hauling costs and projected that as savings for, for that piece.
But you haven't put any of the savings in there for whatever you can sell it. So that's a bump up beyond that, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, I haven't, and the reason, I haven't, and the reason that I haven't is because that's very market dependent.
Right.
So I don't want to promise you today that I can sell that sludge until I have a buyer and I'm not going to shop a buyer until I know that I have a proper product to sell.
I don't want to be argumentative.
No, that's okay.
Yes, yes. It's there.
It's kind of, kind of like, oh, there'll be God, he knows it.
Right.
But clearly, in some form, that sludge has to be removed, whether it is that semi-solid sloppy mess or it's in cake form, it's got to go somewhere.
Right.
And if it goes somewhere, we're either going to A, sell it, or B is we're going to pay someone to come in and transport it and dispose of it.
No.
Where is it going to go?
Stark County Co-op has agreed to take it, they've no charge to you, other than possible minimal transportation.
And who is Stark County Co-op? Those are the farmers, I think?
Yes.
Okay, so is that, is that what Aqua Ohio is eliminating, is, it's, it's simply moving it off the, the Co-op? So they're not getting anything for it?
Well, what my proposal is, or my, I guess not my proposal, but my intent is, is we have a safe measure that says we can go to Stark County Co-op at a very significant reduction of your current payment. Okay, that's the worst case scenario. The best case scenario is then I marketed to sell it and if I am successful in marketing to sell it, then you have the upside of a revenue generation with it. But at this stage of the game, I'm not guaranteeing that revenue generation because I don't know that it exists, to your point. So that's, that's.
You really don't know. And my guess is that if, if someone's getting it for free, why pay, why pay?
Well, you, you don't go to the same person. But you're right. And that's why at this point, I'm not saying that there is extra savings associated with it. I'm saying there's a potential for it because we, I've done stuff like that in advance. But I don't have a buyer today, so I can't project that today. That would be irresponsible.
My thinking is that if it's supply and demand, so Aqua's doing it, if we're doing it, it's not going to be very valuable. So it's basically a wash if we just take off our hands and save us money. If we get money, like we sell to Scots or something, of course, you know, then you can make a difference.
And, and what you do is like you, you market it to other co-ops besides the Stark County Co-op in an attempt to see if they will pay for it. And if they will, then that's awesome. But at the end of the day, if not, you're still eliminating that money that you're spending today to move the wet material. And that's what everything is predicated on at this point.
Is who's, who's hauling, who pays for the hauling from Aqua? If this Aqua paid for the hauling to the Co-op or is the Co-op making that cost?
Again, I can answer that, maybe work on it.
Because they have one of these.
Yeah, but why is it down in the presentation?
Why? Because, uh, I think they had indicated that they were inclined to use the MW Watermark product.
Wouldn't Mark know about this? I mean, Mark has investigated this, this is the first six months we've been talking about this. So I'm assuming that Mark has also talked to Aqua and we know these things. I don't know why we're talking about that.
Mark, you know that answer. Edgar Sludge is charging them a small fee to transport it to Stark County at this point. Just because they said it's easier and they want to get rid of it at this point.
Well, as it relates to trucking, as, so we're looking at, as we presently process this sludge, we put it out into lagoons with the hope that it dehydrates to some extent. But that's only a very limited amount as we've seen. So it just stands to reason that the amount that you're transporting, if we could produce it in cake form, you're reducing, taking the water completely out of it and the water is ninety percent of it. So all the trucks that you need to transport the stuff that exists today will be eliminated because you, you'll be putting it in a cake form. But more importantly, are the types of trucks that can take it? Because right now, the transports that haul the liquid, we're facing a, a national trucking shortage because those types of trucks are being used in the fracking industry and they're, they're just aren't available. And we're seeing this in the bids that we're opening up, that a lot of the supplies that we get come in and they're buying it from the same ways. Prices are about the same as the cost to truck. So this in a powdered cake form opens you up to all kinds of different types of trucks that can come in and pick that up and transport if you had to transport it. So, and if you did have to transport it, you're, if you're doing ninety percent less because it's in a cake powder form. So there's a number of variables, uh, that are, that are at play. And did I hear you correctly? When you said that the legislature in Columbus that created this program that allows for municipalities to do this, that they, uh, competitively bid this out and approximately sixty-one companies, uh, not just from Ohio, I imagine, from national firms have come in and based on the specs within their information and of those, you were, you were narrowed to a finalist list of five. And of, of the five, three were selected and yours was the number one bid of all, of all the sixty-one. So it would stand to reason that, uh, you know, anybody else that we would be dealing with is going to be at, at a higher number because they weren't the lowest number already.
Right. And at the end of the day, if we project, I project that taking the sludge is going to save you X number of dollars, the way our contracts are written and the way the guarantee is written, if it doesn't save you that, then it's my responsibility and my company's responsibility to make that difference.
Vince, real quick, on the water sludge situation, have, have you guys had some experience with those? Is that like, uh, can lead to the portfolio? Are you guys done a few of these projects?
No, we've, we've done them all across the country.
The, the sludge plants?
Mm-hmm.
I can send you a YouTube video of a reference.
Okay, just send, send it to the.
Sure. Because we can't Google it, but you said it.
What's Google?
What's Google? Mark, do you have a question?
One follow-up question, and I'm looking at your contract on page six. You've got clause eighteen, deals with dispute resolutions and indicates that, uh, go to arbitration. Who pays for the arbitration?
I'm sorry?
Who pays for the arbitration? We use it at J A M S Incorporated, which is a dispute resolution company. This is the method of resolving dispute, just in case we can't agree on the savings. Uh, who pays for the, who pays for the cost?
I'm going to tell you, I'm an engineer, so I'm not the lawyer.
All right, we, we can, we can get that if I.
Yeah, you can get that later. Do you know that answer?
Yeah. Sorry. The question again was who pays for the dispute before the savings?
Arbitration.
Okay, if it goes to arbitration, if that is the method prescribed in the contract for dispute resolution, assuming you can agree on savings, uh, we go with arbitration. Arbitration, the clause requires that we use J A M, J A M S Incorporated. So page one.
Okay, so, um, again, I will make sure to get this answer right. I, you know.
That's okay.
I, I, I have a, I really don't know what the answer is. I could answer it right now, but I know someone, if I'm the better one, was Eric Bolander, who's actually out there to take care of this. Normally in situations though, from my understanding, a lot of this is actually negotiated or at least talked from a lawyer standpoint, so that it, our goal is never to get to arbitration.
How many arbitrations have you been to?
Have I been to directly?
No, just a year. How many did you go to in a year? With this?
Yeah, across the country, I don't know that exact number. But again, like Vincent mentioned earlier, we're not perfect. The goal is, we have our reputation stand by and our goal is to keep it going. So realistically, some of our best customers are individuals in which he actually made a mistake on the actual saving calculations, came back, rectified those and actually then made additional improvements so that those quote-unquote, um, savings will then actually be reached at the following year. So again, that's a lot of it is like Vincent mentioned, a loader contract talk, but our goal at the end of the day is to make sure that doesn't happen to arbitration. I will definitely go get that information for you and say anything about that.
Sorry for that.
No, no, no problem, no problem.
So.
It doesn't have to be a lot, though.
You know, you're on the record.
Yeah.
Glad you didn't think it up.
If they have a swall, I can tell you this, it's half a swall of my jobs. I end up earning a million dollars and saving you one for it.
Right, I would say.
With you.
A couple of things, um, I, I do find you guys being very dogged and not a service to the right project. And I, I want to commend the administration for thinking out of the box. But I'm, but I question more not, not you folks, but the strategy of what we're going through here and, and where we're heading down the road here with this here. Because, uh, we're going to go into debt with this. This is a debt type of thing. And none of these things on this list need done right now. There's not a thing on here that needs done, but can't be done over time. Even the sludge thing, we can save him for that, we can continue to save for that. Changing line bulbs, all these things, none of this stuff needs, and this isn't for you guys, this is, I'm, I'm, I'm doing the strategy kind of thing here. None of this stuff needs done. If I, if I was to take, this is community money. If it was my money and it was my home, sure, a guy can go over and tell his man, your windows are going to save, uh, you know, and your pool out there, by the way, you know, you could, you could help your pool, which money looks like a lagoon, if I had one. You can upgrade that at this time too. Now, am I going to take a loan out right now and pay for all of it at one time? Or I could pay for this stuff because it doesn't, it's not needed all at one time? So when I look at the, I guess the logic of, of what I fall back on is, why do these things need done all of a sudden at one time? And why would we take out a loan for three point two million dollars? Now, the savings on here seems really good, but the interest that we're going to pay on this three point two, what was it, one point five million, a billion, two million dollars with that?
One point two.
And I don't know where that's going, but, and we want to build a service center at the same time and take a loan out for that too? So where's our strategy with this thing in trying to get to, sure, it's a nice savings and these folks here are terrific when it comes to something that is really needed immediately. But that's kind of where I am at on this. I think I mentioned it last time here that, uh, there's a lot of things on here we can continue to do. And I went down and talked to Mark today and I've been at the sludge building and kind of got off base here on all this sludge of goons stuff. We have a couple of sludge of goons, we have one in Kent, we have one over in the Masslin area. And, you know, they're very similar to us. You can take a look at what they did and, and kind of go through that. I don't know what the cost is, if it's something we can get. And there's, there's an area there where, which might be a high, uh, a high dollar volume then that we could probably use your services, in my opinion, uh, down the road here. But some of these other stuff here, like windows, boiler, or chiller, we've been doing that for how many years? Why are we changing all of a sudden to need someone to tell us? Again, no offense here, anyway, need someone to tell us or go out and look and see what other, what other municipalities do this and what their problems are and where should we go with this? So I know it's a different strategy and I know that we've got some good folks here that can handle that, but in my opinion, that's just too much to put on the community money here going forward with this kind of strategy.
Uh, one thing that I didn't mention is in the legislation, um, it's, the debt does not impact the city's net indebtedness. It doesn't impact your ability to borrow. Because the, the legislation was created because they know that the savings are going to be there to pay it back. So it doesn't go against your ability to borrow.
So that's where the net neutral concept is, like a dollar spent, like, like basically in the long run, we're making things more efficient. But, but like, like what Mark was saying, kind of what I, where I was identifying with what he said, is as a twenty-year span at three point eight percent amortized over twenty, that's one point two. Although the savings that we have will wash that away, I get that. That's what you're saying.
Right, basically, you're not impacting your existing budget. You're taking dollars that you're spending and you're moving them over here to upgrade items that maybe need upgraded in two years, not today.
Correct.
But you're preventing having to pay for it, not the capital cost, in two years from now when it fails.
It, it's almost like if I had a rental property hypothetically and I brought in a thousand dollars a month and my mortgage is seven hundred a month, you know, I might even be positive possibly.
Correct.
Yeah, so I get that. So the question is, is do we spend one point to an interest to just get it over with, take the pain and then accept the fact that it's going to be a wash, maybe a net positive? Or do we phase it in over time based on what Mark's scenario was? So the, the point is, is that I, I, I think this is the right path to go as far as making these upgrades that we need to do. I just, I just mentally have hard times financing anything.
And there's a lot of flexibility in financing too. We've been off those rates, the city doesn't have to finance all of it, again, to reduce your income, so we know you want to pay.
Yeah, you know, like twenty years, a lot of five years.
Okay. Yeah, so that goes.
Well, I, I just wanted to respond and, uh, try to help, uh, you know, as far as the great questions that members of Serrano brought up, you know, as far as the.
you know, as far as the strategy or whatever, and why, why now and all that. You know, I look at it as this is money that you are spending and you will spend it every year, except you're spending it by giving it to American Electric Power. You're spending it. We don't have to do these projects. You're right, but that money's still being spent. It's one of American Electric Power. This is about, is taking advantage of what the legislature has created to allow us to take money that was going to go to AEP and direct it towards principal interest payments on this project, so that it's a wash. So it's being very effective with your capital monies, that you're using money that you were spending on something else that now you wouldn't have to spend. They bring in an element of a guarantee that comes with that. So that if it falls short of the savings, they guarantee that. The strategy too is that, you know, and I know I'm just trying to give council information, that, you know, I don't have a dog in this race. Okay? But this is, you know, they are, I've had other vendors come through here, pitch various things. They were the third one. And I don't even know how they got here, if it was a cold call, they came up, who they talked to, but they showed up in the door. I was doing two other firms, hey, why not? We'll allocate the personnel to show them around and see what they could come up with. And they had more to offer than some of the others. But the point of this is that it's about business. And I know that's kind of a mixed word in government, but, you know, we do run a utility business. And at some point, we are going to be replacing, you know, water lines again that have all gone in, need to be replaced. Our enterprise fund has gone into debt to pay for these water lines. That's a routine process and we use the income that comes from that to pay those bonds or notes off. And what we're trying to do is to drive the cost of that business operation. That was part of the AMI project. If we can, if we can increase the technology, which reduces the amount of water that we're, that we're losing from lost water leaks out of the system, we can't find it. Mark does a great job getting that number to be the best and industry standard. But with this process, we can do more. It's not a person who goes to Florida and leaves their home and comes back with a five thousand dollar water bill because we didn't know the water was running. With the AMI project, we're able to do that. In addition, it alleviates personnel because we don't have to have meter readers running around and we can allocate those resources to other departments, so it makes it a leaner operation. This sludge goon would do the same thing. Yep, we don't have to do it, but we would continue to pay an excess of a hundred thousand dollars. We are bidding this contract out again this year and I, it would stand to reason that it's not going to come in less. But we're going to continue to spend six figures a year on this. And at some point, we're going to have six-figure, seven-figure water line deals that we're going to have to do. And I mean, this is what camping has gone through where, you know, a lot of the water lines that they put in as they built out their city, you know, you have to come back and address those because they just reach a certain age and they fail. So the idea was to try to break down the costs of our, of running that business enterprise, so to speak. That also then relieves water customers of, you know, having to pay for those higher costs through a higher rate. The more that we can do in that regards, the better. In respect to borrowing the money in another way, saying, we don't use this program that was competitively bid out and we just go about our own way and try to borrow the money. It'd be my understanding that in that process, that would be a debt that would be a cost on our balance sheet because it's not using this particular program that's been sanctioned by the state with the state saying that's not supposed to affect your balance sheet.
Pat, so like if you had a million dollars in the bank and we didn't need it because it's a CD or it's just part of our asset allocation, could we borrow against our own assets and self-fund the project at a much lower interest rate so we can still get the job done and pay maybe five hundred dollars or three hundred thousand in interest? That way there, we could use that savings to get more done quicker and have less debt. That's how I would do it.
Yeah, that's really a question for the Director of Finance. I'm not going to step into that realm and when she wants to address that, she can do that. But I wanted to go on to say that, you know, I've been here a long time too. I used to serve on the other side of that aisle. And I was a person that even though I had a pension to try to save and everything too, the bottom line is money gets spent. Show me where we're able to save up this money. Show me that we're able to put this money away today. And the seven of you are all very responsible individuals and fiscally conservative, and I commend that. And you can put money away and set it aside, but you know what? Someday you won't be here. Someday it'll be somebody else and they'll be that rainy day fund and then it'll get raided and spent on something else. I've seen that movie, it happened. We used to have a rainy day fund, twenty-five million dollars back in the day when the Hoover Company was way in its prime. But we spent that money on roads and other improvements. And when you don't have the money, it's hard to save the money. You know, right now, the mayor's done a great job keeping the, you know, the city's budgets in line and cost of operations in line with where we were from two thousand, you know, eight, nine, when Hoover, you know, hatched and all that. But what if we have another downturn in the economy and our income tax take goes down? And that, that able to save money is the same in your house. When real estate is moving, you have more money to save than when it isn't moving, you have to kind of cut your...
No, I get what you're saying.
So I don't see where, I don't see where you can't, you can't prohibit a future council from spending that money.
No, no, I'm with you, but I just think there's a clever way to do it, with self-funding.
So let's talk a floor later about the new set.
No, that's fine. And then we'll just develop in us being, bring in more revenue.
I think what's nice, sorry, one thing that I guess I like about this is Mark, he even said, you know, we bought water before, bought shelter. Yes, and maybe with the Director of Operations, maybe with the Mayor, maybe Rob, we don't know who bought those. And what we have found since Pat has been here and even I think with Rod doing some of the projects, is things were always done correctly. And now we are paying large prices to fix this facility and fix our infrastructure, to make sure of your security, to make sure certain roads are being done appropriately. So if we have people that manage this professionally, this is what they do. We have the dad that says they do it, they do it well, they're voted number one. Pat is a part-time sludge professor. I think it's what you are. It's for you. You learn as you go, but none of us are those people. So I love having some management. I mean, you're right, we could probably have someone do it, just like a contractor. You could go build your own house and you don't have to sub it out, or you can sub it out and you can be the contractor. It's a lot of money, people, there's no guarantees, there are change order fees all the time. You can't predict weather. There's too many exponential that you can't control, where they control that and then they're going to write some check. So I guess that's what I like, is somebody professional that knows what they're doing managing their project.
I agree.
And to Dominic's point, he brings up a good point if it's his idea to kind of do that.
I agree.
But the other part of that is the interest rate risk. When we talk about saving for that rainy day, and let's say that this boiler that's in this building is fifty years old and at some point it goes. And if we have or haven't saved and we have to finance at some point, what happens? What's the effect on the amount that you're borrowing if interest rates are higher? I mean, interest rates have been going up since two thousand and fifteen.
Hey, I love this point. There's a road that doesn't need done and we can pay for that. I mean, that'd be a success.
I was saying, like, what we were talking about outside of our area was the water fund. We spent a million dollars, two million dollars in the water fund. And that's why I asked, they're working on a five-year plan, so I just wanted to see, you know, what is critical that needs to be done? Can we delay a project for a year? Because there's always those emergency breaks, right? So if we delay a project for a year, that's a million dollars if you put towards that two point two. Right away, finance a mill, leaning against our own asset, and that brings your interest rate down to like almost zero. So, and I've done this many times before, this can be done. It's a legitimate way to do it. It's a low-cost way to do it because we have the assets and our CDs and everything else. We can take a conservative approach. We can even just use half of it, you know, so that we, the whole thing for me is I love all what they're saying and I get it. I'm all for it. I'm just out for financing it at one point too, even though it's a net neutral.
Yeah, and there...
Sorry, sorry.
Can I ask a question? Best case scenario in a perfect world, we can pay cash for this. Could we still do your program and you would still be renting?
Yes.
And the savings would just be...
I'd love more cash.
Yes, you could pay all day cash and half day cash.
Right, there's going to be a hybrid method. Because what Dominic was talking about, he spoke with Rob and I earlier today, and Rob and I are working on a five-year forecast for both the water system and water fund to look at rate studies. Which is something you need to do every so often. So if we look at the water fund and we say, okay, you know, there's a couple of water lines coming up next year and the year after, but they're not critical, we could push those off. You know, it would only take, what, three to four big water line projects to come up with two point two million dollars?
And the other thing, Vince, you talked about in one of our previous meetings here, is you may want to touch on your experience with some of the funding sources in addition to going to the banks for a loan. You've worked with the sludge press, for example. You could work with Ohio Water Development Authority, Ohio EPA, DFA, or Water Pollution Control Fund, Ohio couple of works, grant for low-interest loan, zero-interest loans. Your experience with that, with the, even we can apply for those, of course, as they say, we don't get it.
Yeah, so during the development, during the next three months, we'll have financial workshops. We'll work with the city to figure out the right model, whether it's partially financed or completely paid for with cash. We will put together, we will help you apply for rebates, we can apply for grants, we can look at low-interest financing, low-interest loans. There's a lot of options. We use three point eight percent in the cash flow model as kind of a worst-case slash likely scenario of is this feasible? But it's not the hard and fast number.
I love what you're saying. If we could figure out a way to cover more cash, less financing, I'm in.
Yep.
What do you do, you use your three point eight percent over how many years?
Over twenty.
Twenty?
Yep.
And what did you anticipate would be annual savings? The number of...
Look, it's two separate, it's two separate cash flows because we're...
One's an enterprise fund.
Okay, all right. But I just, you know, I was doing a little back-to-back to napkin math at five percent over fifteen years. And the debt service at five percent at two point two million is only two hundred thousand dollars a year over fifteen years at five percent. So if we're going to save a hundred...
They're saying two thirty-five right now. Two hundred and thirty-five a year would be our annual cost of twenty years to take care of this, this interest pay, you know, P and I.
But that's for both, the water and...
No, no, the three point seven is two thirty-five, which is twenty thousand a month, nineteen minutes and change every month. Because I did the math.
And savings.
Right, what they're saying, so if it's a net neutral, which is, you know, kind of like you're saying, money spent in, money spent out goes to better benefit in the long run. I just, like I said, I'm good with all what he said. It's just how we finance it. If we solve that problem, I'm in.
How's the fairway?
Yeah, Dave, how do you weigh it?
I think, you know, as I'm listing all of this, first off, I appreciate the presentation you folks gave. Because the goal is that we want to save, we want to save on our, there's three areas in the presentation I see. The utilities, the electric, the toilets, and then also the sludge press, and then the utilities in this particular area. So the one thing, and I could probably see the slide from the angle that I was at, when you look at the overall savings, like over a twenty-year period, like what would be the savings based on what we're spending right now in our utility costs? And then the percentage, so it sounds like the savings are not real clear in each specific area, right?
They are, they're just not clear on the slide. I have to wait my cash.
So when we, so when we're looking at, like, let's say that we're, we're spending a hundred and five thousand dollars on hauling the sludge right now. And then, and then we're spending, what is it, like eighty-nine thousand on the, is that the electric that was eighty-nine?
Good.
So city, so city hall is, we're, right now we're spending sixty-one thousand in city hall. The street lighting, we're spending eighty-nine thousand. And the water treatment plant, does that say there's...
Two sixty-four. If you're in that weight box.
Okay. Now, is that, that's an, that's an annual cost there?
If your annual utility cost at the city hall building is sixty-one thousand dollars in gas and collecting, your annual cost of street lighting and electric is eighty-nine thousand dollars. The savings for the street lighting is estimated at sixteen thousand, almost seventeen thousand annually. The annual utility cost of the water treatment plant is two hundred and sixty-four thousand. Your savings estimated for the water treatment plant is hundred and forty thousand.
Right. So annually, under this program annually, what are we going to save as far as city hall? And then, and then what are we going to save as far as the street lighting annually? And what are we going to save as far as the water treatment plant, what you're paying?
That final cost, go ahead.
You're in line with these residents.
Right, I understand.
So what you're looking at is you're looking at roughly one twenty percent savings.
At each category?
No, you're just in general, like the city hall. So you're saving about fifteen thousand in electric, roughly, for the city hall. You're saving roughly seventeen thousand annually for the lighting in electric.
Did you say seventeen thousand in...
The streetlight.
Seventeen thousand in lighting?
Yeah, so you're looking at somewhere around thirty-two thousand electric overall between those two. Then for the gas, at city hall, you're saving about seventy-five hundred dollars roughly.
Annually.
Annually. Okay? And then for the hauling of the sludge, we're looking at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So the big savings is the sludge?
Yes, it is.
So you have something to those numbers real quick. Sure.
The only reason it's been a hundred and five the last few years is because I can't get them there to clean it up. I'm full to the gills most of the time. I'm joking. They can only get two pits taken out a year. It takes three months to fill a pit. It's twelve dollars and ten cents a yard to haul it out of there. There's forty-five hundred yards in a pit. That's fifty-four thousand and change every pit. And I fill up four a year.
So really, the low...
The actual spendage is more, but I can't get them there off of the dump and haul it out.
So really, so if you could get people to haul it away at the time, you'd manage...
I'd be spending two hundred thousand.
He'd be spending two hundred thousand.
No.
And then, so really, what we're looking at is for city hall, we're looking at twenty-two thousand five hundred. Right, that's our expense.
You see that?
It's, yeah, twenty-two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars is what we're asking for gas and electric for city hall.
Okay. And then, and then you have thirty-two thousand for the street lighting, correct?
No, we have sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars for the street lighting, about seven or seventeen thousand dollars.
So we got like, for everything but the line sludge, we have thirty, thirty-eight thousand?
Yes, almost thirty, about thirty-nine, I guess.
So really, the biggest cost is the line sludge, but that's one of the things that, when you're, when you're talking about the savings, that's what we're after, right?
Correct.
Because we don't know what the market value of this sludge is. So it could be, we could sell it, we could give it away, or we may have to pay to haul it away.
Well, and what this is assuming at the hundred and forty thousand is you're giving it away and you're paying a small fee to haul it. That, I mean, that's basically...
Yeah, one of the things, as far as the character, which I think is a nice thing. Well, one of the questions I have, like, you look at the yard waste market. We used to collect fifteen bucks a ton, you know, for paint. And it was no cost to haul it away, now we're, you know, paying to go and sell. Those are just, I'm hearing some of the questions that you guys can't really answer right now. And so, because it's just about the money.
Well, before you answer, I wanted to help, just to reiterate though, that if we did this project, you'd be providing the sludge in a more usable form. So there's, not everybody has the type of equipment that can spread the sludge in its liquid form out onto the fields. That's a more specific operation. But the type that can take this pelletized stuff and get it on the fields.
We're also allowed to stock pilot at that point. You'll see the farmers will stack the fields out there because you don't have the water and it's run off and contaminating streams. So you can stock pilot at that point too.
It's a much, it's a much better form than trying to get rid of the... That makes sense. It's much more clear.
Absolutely. And the bottom line is, is that we're predicting these savings, like I said, we're still in the early stage. So everything we're doing is at a conservative nature. Typically, when I come in, I project things like this. I'm projecting them at, at the, I guess, the worst-case scenario. Typically, I come in at or above when I come to the finance on what the savings are. So this, what you're looking at right now should be a worst-case scenario on the savings.
Okay, I have a question, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel?
One thing I want to say too, as you mentioned, these are very conservative. So even with the financing, that is conservative as well, we're assuming that the car rates are where they are. The good thing about this project is that because there's a company like a Johnson Foods, you know, local, whether they're... you know, a local, who have backed up for you, you know, that company, the savings that we generate are pretty true, pretty, um, pretty much attainable, which means that this debt is loved by different lenders, we're not a bank. But a lot of lenders like it because they consider it to be self-liquidating debt. So realistically, what you're gonna transpire is, you have a interest rate, then doing a project like this would be the overall interest rate, okay? But again, like Matt said, they're trying to be very, very conservative, looking more at the double point two and almost four percent at curbs today. So realistically, if this thing comes out after our development, it might actually be, is that twenty years, it could be seventeen years.
Is that a fixed rate?
I'm sorry?
Fixed rate, amortized over whatever the?
It would be a fixed rate, correct. And we have a structural, a structural finance team, and we're working together with Laura and everybody else to make sure that the best way, as you said, Mr. Fontaine, will be a, a team.
Thank you. I got all the information I need.
Mr. Fontaine, is that better?
Yep. It's not about what you guys are doing, it's the strategy of what we're taking. So I don't want you to be offended in any way, but the comment that I think the way we should be going about this thing. Because we have a lot of things that need done, and a lot of these things don't need done tomorrow. They could, we budget this stuff every year, just like we do every year, we can easily do that. And I take it your guys, your services are very valuable for some things that we will probably need. So I appreciate the, uh, presentation, so.
Thank you.
Before we leave, I want to ask just one question. Want to make sure, before we leave, that we've answered any other questions that you guys. Is there anything else that might be out there that?
Just one other question, because I was writing this down. What did you have annually for the sludge cost, was it one?
Hundred, a hundred and forty thousand.
Hundred and forty, okay. And that, again, varies, because right now, we're spending a hundred and five because we can't get people to haul it away. But if we did have people hauling it away at a time of the man, we could be spending two hundred.
Correct.
Because it takes three months to pull it out.
But can, can we get a hard copy of the presentation? That, that way you can look it over again? Manual? Yeah, we can do that.
Thanks.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay. You good?
Good.
Next up, we have community economic development, Chair Warren Keyes.
Yes, it looks like, I'm sure you have a PowerPoint? Pat? Yes? No?
Which one are we doing?
You have a PowerPoint?
I do.
Okay.
I'm working on it up, just up on the screen now, as you see.
I see.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna swipe around a little bit here. Okay, so this was a matter that went to the planning commission, as we called, just as a backdrop, there is a homeowner on the Howard Wood neighborhoods that, that would like to sell their house. And they would love to sell it so that somebody could live in it. But because of the way it's zoned, it was refused. So, uh, planning commission, we presented all the properties over there that could be affected. And they made a recommendation to the city council to consider changing the zone. Uh, and they recommended an R two F with a mixed overlay. So it would allow somebody to live there, but if they did want to live there, they wanted to use it in that, uh, mixed-use classification, but. So what I did is, I went over, took pictures of all the properties, and we're gonna get the first slide here. And then what you see in yellow, some of the information, for instance, the parcel number, the registered owner of the property, it's a two-family. So presently, it's zoned light industrial, and action is needed on this property. So we did a recommend, the recommendation from the planning commission was to change it to an R two F for both parcels, so there's vacant parcel X with it, and then the parcel of this, of this two-family building, and so on. Uh, Howard Street, this is a, a lot, building, an outbuilding way in the back of it. It's owned by K and L Partners. It's presently in, uh, zoned as industrial, light industrial, but it does not have the mixed-use overlay on it. So to be consistent with all the other light industrial that we have throughout the entire Hoover District project, this would need, uh, an overlay X on, on that parcel. Another big piece here, we recognize, uh, on the backside of our fire station, uh, it's zoned light industrial, it just needs a mixed-use overlay. This one on three sixty-two Howard, uh, it is, action needed is a mixed-use overlay and changed to an R two F. This one here, vacant land next to this property, owned by the homeowner, uh, needs to be a mixed-use overlay, R two F. This one, the same, R two F, mixed-use overlay is the action needed. Uh, this one presently is an office building, uh, the only action needed is the mixed-use overlay. On this home, uh, it's two-family, needs to be R two F, mixed-use overlay. Likewise, here at three thirty-two Howard, R two F, mixed-use overlay. Uh, three twenty-six Howard, R two F, mixed-use overlay. Three twenty-two Howard, mixed-use overlay only needed. On this one here, uh, no action is needed to change it from light industrial, it just needs a mixed-use overlay. On this property here, no action is needed, it is owned by Maple Street Commerce. It is light industrial, and it has the mixed-use overlay, so no action is needed at three fifty-seven Whipper. This one here, Maple Street Commerce, it needs the mixed-use overlay. And then likewise, uh, on this one, also owned by Maple Street Commerce. Uh, this, empty parcel next to the last house we looked at, does not need any action. It is, uh, light industrial with a mixed-use overlay. That was it. So you get an idea of that, what properties need a little tweak with just the mixed-use overlay X. Others need to be changed from light industrial to the R two F. Maybe we have the tendency to allow people to be able to sell their home, and there's a, one of these properties, the house is for sale, offer's been pending, trying to get this thing wrapped up.
Do you have any questions? It's something we spoke about when the company left, when, you know, people started moving into the building, that homes around it were seriously affected, and they might, may want to leave, and this would be the best way for them to, to do that.
And, and the purpose of this tonight is just to give you the information, give you the visuals, so that you could see that, because you still have a public hearing that you have to do on May thirteenth. But I didn't want you to go into the public hearing meeting and not have an understanding of kind of what was.
That helped a lot. Any questions? We can put it on agenda, give it its first reading on May thirteenth. In the value committee meeting. We have a public hearing, then it's adjourned?
Right. And could I ask a question? I think what came out of planning, there were some things that didn't need to be added to the list. So do we have a complete list of, of what we need?
Yeah, what you have is a complete list, and there were three properties that no action is needed, and those were identified.
Yeah, thank you.
Could we, could we have a map attached to the legislation?
Well, I can say that we've identified these properties by their parcel number. I think that would probably be more accurate, because I, I can't attest to the accuracy of the map. So what, what is the geographic map of where these properties look at? But you want the zoning map on it?
Just an overview of the owner's website with the zone?
Yeah, that, that works. Okay. Sure.
Okay, I think that's good on that. Okay, next up is the recommendation that we change, um, the word of public hearing to adjudication hearing for, um, planning commission. And the next one is for zoning board appeals. Anybody, I, I think we, we've been doing this for probably a year and a half, if not two years, having people sworn in, um, making sure that they're giving, um, facts, not opinions, because that's what really matters, if it does get, um, sent to a court of law, or a court, and, and, and.
That's correct. The, um, our trial courts, which is our common police court, and the, you know, all of our courts of appeals require, as you said, for the first one, for variances, and that's in eleven seventy-nine ten. We're simply replacing public hearing with adjudication hearing, making clear what that means. Essentially, the courts state that variances, and as in the second one, conditional use permits for valuable property rights, and they're very distinctive, much different than changing zoning. Here, where you're talking about quite a number of parcels, where you're changing zoning, you absolutely want public input. So you have a public hearing, where the public is invited to come and, and speak their, their voice, their concerns about any change in zoning. When you're dealing with variances and conditional use permits, those are really unique. They're essentially confined to a parcel or two, if, if that. And the courts have said that to, uh, change those valuable property rights, that it requires that a adjudication hearing be held for conditional use permits and for variances. Those are situations where witnesses are sworn in, are subject to cross-examination, documents are authenticated, so that should the court receive an appeal from the award or denial of conditional use or variance, the court has a clean record from which to view that, to give its opinion of whether or not the decision of the zoning board of appeals or the planning commission, whether its decision was based on sound evidence. The third one is tied in there as well, and it simply clarifies, the, the way that this was codified, when you look at in our ordinances, it appears as though council takes a recommendation from the planning commission for a conditional use and a similar use, when indeed, it's only for a similar use because a similar use is a change in zoning, where you would want a, a public hearing. And so we wanted to clarify, both in the title, where it just simply says "action by council", we wanted to be clear that it's "action by council for a similar use recommendation". And the second item is, in that eleven seventy-seven ten, there's paragraph B one, where it states where, if council confirms a recommendation of the planning commission, it simply requires a majority vote. But if council rejects a recommendation of the planning commission, it shall not be overruled by not less than six votes. And we've not been following that. It hasn't been an issue, because it hasn't been that close, we've not been following that. But it's been recommended for change, because in our charter, section two point oh five legislative procedure, it states that, let me make sure I get this right, uh, it's one, two, three, four, the first sentence of the fifth paragraph of two point oh five. An affirmative vote that at least four members of council shall be required for the enactment of every resolution or ordinance, unless a larger number be required by the divisions of this charter. Now, the charter only requires the six members of council for emergency action. Nowhere in our charter does it mention a overriding a recommendation from the planning commission. And since our charter doesn't address it, then this ordinance that requires the six votes to overrule the planning commission is in conflict. And so the charter would take the lead on that. And so my recommendation is simply to remove that section with B one and two. It's simply, it is a simple majority to overrule or to accept a planning commission recommendation.
Okay.
Awesome.
Daryl?
Tim, I, I, you and I just watched an email today on this. I think we also need to look at eleven eighty-one oh eight zoning amendments, which also establishes, uh, the planning commission, rejection of a proposed amendment, five, five council votes would need to pass it.
Correct.
So we should probably revisit that as well, if it's bringing it viable.
Indeed, and it, it's very timely that, that you mentioned that, because, uh, our, our good friends in the billing department in SafeBuild were challenged to look through our planning and zoning ordinances and for, uh, for it to put together any amendments that it thinks are necessary. And one of those, um, kind of runs through, because we changed the name of an important official in the billing department from the superintendent of permits and economic development, is now the chief billing officer. So that's quite a number of, of changes. But there are some substantive ones that it has recommended and provided to the administration and to my office, approximately fifty changes, uh, that are, most of them are just very minor, but some are more specific in addressing which billing codes that we adopt. And so over the next few months, we'll, we'll see quite a few of this.
So I guess what I'm asking is that, at our next council holding, Marcia could have under her committee eleven eighty-one oh eight?
Yes, sir.
And just clean that line up, too.
Yeah, do all these, these four at once, and, and then we'll eat away at that apple of the, of the others. Take the most important ones first, the easier ones, and get through those. Because all of them, because they're in planning facilities, requirements, send a recommendation to the planning, and come back and public.
Okay, are you ready to put on the agenda? Okay. And last on my page is the proposal for the economic development, so diagnostic and potential rewrite. As you recall, we spoke in length over deciding how we were gonna do the Main Street district, and then we had to stop doing that, came back, and then Calphi, um, people were helping us with all that. And as they were helping us, they were looking at all of our zoning codes and laws and thought, "Wow, you guys really probably need a whole new rewrite, or just let, let us look at it." And they looked at it, and they had given us a proposal as to helping us to sort of, we rework it and, and make it a little more intuitive, a little more friendly. Right now, it really lists, like, everything you can't do. You want to be a little more happy and say everything you can do, start the hazard. Um, because we don't do that right now. So this is a three-part proposal. Patrick's been working with me very closely, and I'll let him go ahead and explain it. What you have in your pocket?
Yeah, and, and, uh, basically, we started this a year ago with Marcia, Donovan, Darrell, and Chamber, uh, talking with their business people, their, their patrons, figuring out, you know, all the things that we already know that we don't like, plus, you know, other things that we find objectionable as well. And so, as you recall, Calphi, uh, they're one of the leaders, uh, in, in the state that are in this realm exclusively. And, uh, in talking with them, a lot of them, they were showcasing some of the projects that we're doing in other communities. And the focus that those communities are applying to their.
applying to their zoning. And they outlined basically three general principles. Zoning should respect the existing and reflect desired development patterns. Zoning should regulate only what actually needs to be regulated and focus on desired outcomes. And zoning should be the implementation of a plan, not a barrier to achieving the vision. So you kind of get the idea of, we're going, and most of this stuff that we have, of course, dates back to the corporation in our community, and we made changes along the way, stuff like Tim just outlined tonight, you know, we didn't know about a year ago, but we know now, and we're finding things. We've been working with businesses coming into the community, I found a number of stoppers that have been placed on trying to locate a business on Main Street, and in spite of the efforts that all of you have done to try to get that process completed, it was determined by the consultants that implementation of the map would have created what it was laid out in writing to do, which is a separate district, not an overlay, and the zoning would have been more restricted on Main Street. So we're having to go through and try to piecemeal it all together, and talking with Member Fonte just this past week on other businesses and trying to come in, and it just doesn't work, that we engage in this process. So the materials that we emailed to you indicated a three-part process, but you know, I tried to be, you know, make sure that the funds that we're expending get the desired outcome that we're looking for. So I tend to break it up into smaller chunks to make sure that at the end of the road, we're okay with going to the next step. So that's what we're proposing here, is to do the diagnosis and give us an evaluation of what we need to do to fix it. Let's see, we'll come up with, this would involve a lot of meetings with community stakeholders, with the council, the mayor, you know, business interests on Main Street, whatnot, to come up with, what's your, what's the brakes, what are the issues that we have to resolve? And then throwing that all into a hodgepodge or a whiteboard, coming up with that, and then bringing that back, it's about a six to nine month process to get to there. And then when we have that, okay, what do we want to do now? Do these make sense? Do we want to implement them? And if we want to implement them, then we can go to the next step. So I felt this was a good way to minimize the amount that we'd have to expend, it doesn't matter that we have budgeted for, we've been working on this, like I said, for over a year, we've worked that into the budget for 2019, funds are available, it's just a matter of whether the council wants to go ahead and try to recommend the vision that we've been working on.
So are these the pages you're actually proposing? That are in the draft, or is this something?
It's 60,000.
Yes, but the first two pages are 60,000.
Pat, so I've had conversations with some of the citizens, wondering we're on, we're off, we're on, we're off, we're on, we're off, with MSB. And so what I was trying to explain is like what we were just talking about, is that the MSB is sort of like a mandated approach over the baby issue, now that we're looking at different kinds of job entities living in the city. So doing the total rewrite, even though it's going to now stretch it out another six, nine, 12 months, which I really don't like, because the Main Street corridor is my main priority right now, right? So there's no way to speed it up because of the stakeholders, public meetings, and all that. Correct?
Well, no, I think there's room for acceleration without sacrificing quality. I mean, they have done a number of these to different communities, and they figure out how many weeks in between a meeting, but to the extent that we can pull it together quicker, and get the stakeholders assembled quicker, and provide that input.
I mean, I think it's a smart plan to do it right once and for all, hopefully, and I just would see, you know, since they do this as a boilerplate, tweaking it to the North Canton brand, you know, I would just see that, in my opinion, a lot of the problem of revenue is based on Hoover sitting empty in the Main Street corridor and not live. So in my opinion, that's what, I feel there's a big sense of urgency to help with the revenue, and also the missing link that we have in the city, in my personal opinion.
And we were, Ms. Freeman and I were fortunate to attend an Ohio Development Conference, in which we were able to meet with a lot of our peers in other communities around Ohio, and then listen to what the experts in the field, and how they approach coming into a community, what they look for. And you know, before they even talk to you, you know, they're looking at a number of things, and one of them is this zoning code, so you know, to some of the points that a few of the residents have made at these meetings about, you know, consolidated districts, or consolidated parcels of the larger parcels, that's great, we would like to do that, but what is it at the end, when you have the bigger parcel that you want to put in? If the zoning is too convoluted to understand what you're able to do, they move on with those buckets. It's all about the return on investment, how much time they have to put into it to get to where they want to go, and we just get passed over, and I think this is a way to change that narrative that you guys have been working on.
I think what Sean indicated was, in having sat through a couple of these iterations in the past, what we got in terms of our zoning language is better. Everybody's got, around Northeast Ohio, has the same language, it just simply doesn't serve us. What Sean's going to try to do is, to your point, is to get us the language that allows people to come in and get creative, and don't serve as an encumbrance to development, but as a facilitator.
Patrick, did you also, we were talking about this, saying this could help eliminate the issues of the kind of planning and zoning meetings, and that many of the clients, they don't even, they don't even have to know, because it's already so cut out, that they're doing it correctly to read it with.
That's correct, that's been the result, the result of what they've been seeing around Ohio, where this process has been going on, is saying what can be done, plus the guess that we don't need to get approval for, because whatever it is that this council and the mayor decided that that's what they want, then we can just write it up that way, that saves a lot of that aggravation, and aggravation equals time, time equals money, and that all leads to development.
People looking for...
Yeah, you have to save them.
When you have people looking to work here, contractors, builders, people that want to do businesses here, and pay one and have percent income tax, I can tell you right now, we have a reputation issue that we have to correct, and hopefully Safeville can do it, we've had conversations with them, and we just have to make sure that, unfortunately, perception's reality out there, and I've been hearing for a long time, Marcia's one talked about, we just had this conversation with a customer the other day, we want to figure out how to fix that, make it user-friendly, make it cost-effective, make it efficient, quick and easy. Because like a lot of times, you know, when you have projects you're doing, it's whether prohibited, because if you're laying concrete or building something, you don't have three or four days to get the answer, you've got to speed up the process. So I know with the iPads and what we were talking about, they're in the process of that, I just want to see, maybe eventually we can talk and figure out, guys, you know, how we're doing with builders, the perception, the reality, and are we solving a lot of these bad problems that we've started with for many, many, many years.
Yeah, when you look at the zoning, I think zoning historically is really probably one of the most important areas that we have in the city, because of the terms, how we utilize our property for economic development, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial. And as Patrick had said, and for those of you that have been around for a long time, we went through the update of the zoning codes, which is not an easy thing, and what this specialist will give us, is that we don't want any unintended consequences, you know, so we solve one problem, and through all of our experience, we say, "Wow, that's great, we should implement that." And then we don't realize that we just, we solved one problem, created five more problems. So what they do is they'll say, "Hey, this is what other communities have done, and this has been the result of those zoning codes of the past." Because you see, some communities are, you know, they're thriving as far as they're going, because they make it more user-friendly for the developers and the property owners. I think the challenges we've had here, there's really, they're really twofold. Number, I think we've solved the first one with our partnership, is that we were lacking in technology and managing information under our outdated zoning rules, but we've done a good job of that. Problem, we're still operating under old rules that need to change. So we've become more efficient in enforcing rules that sound, and you're saying that we need to change, and that's what this company...
All right. One question for the seven months, is it okay, do you need an I emergency? Would that help you? Could put emergency closet, give it to readings, where are you at?
Whatever, whatever the council would prefer.
The backdrop to this is that we've got, currently, this downtown redevelopment district, that's coming along, it will be for us soon, and I think it would be helpful if we had both of these completed simultaneously, if they're simultaneous possible, so to answer your question, let's do this, let's get them started.
Yes.
I think we might also want some opportunities to...
And that matter is coming to the council on May 20th, I'm trying to space out some of the bigger topics, so you don't get hit with a problem to one night that's too much to comprehend.
And remember that the slowest part of this is, it's going to have to have a planning, have a public hearing set, have a meeting, it's going to have to come back to us, have a public hearing set, so Calfie, if I get done super quick, it's going to be our process that's really going to take a while.
So the DRD, which is the downtown redevelopment district, to help make it more attractive for businesses, manufacturing, whatever, that comes to the area, but on top of that, are we looking at the entertainment district yet, or is that something as an overlay to the rest of this?
All in good time.
I'm excited.
We're doing this tonight.
Wish you good one.
We've waited for a year already, let's just scratch that one.
All right, that's the end of my committee, we're moving on.
You got to do faster than that.
All right. Okay, say your mind. Next up, we're in the rural plan, Chairman Revol.
Like the record to note that Mr. Foltz is actually giving this evening.
Yeah.
What I'm talking about, waiting.
Forever.
Six, seven years.
Waiting for what? Do we have to repeat ourselves?
Let the record reflect, Members Peters and Fonte will be stepping out during this conversation.
With 30 years of experience, why not?
You have your packets, draft of the rental registration. I'm not proposing that we take action this evening, this is for comment only. If you have comments regarding anything you'd like to see in it or to read it, Tim has promised to take excellent notes. If you're looking at it, what I'd like to do is kick off, Tim, by reiterating a couple of things that I mentioned today. Firstly, I'd like a stronger reference to fire smoke detector inspection as part of that process, and we don't want to ignore the public safety element if we're going to be inspecting rental units. And the second is, I'd like to have a little closer alignment between section A, which is the required, where it says "any building or unit", and a little better language than in 1702.05, where we talk about 1, 2, 3 rental units, but I think we need something beyond that, whatever the formula is, I guess maybe I wasn't clear, I needed a third cup of coffee, but I'd like to make sure that we're looking at large complexes as well, and that we have a formula to deal with this.
No, this was, certainly welcome to change it, but just so that you know, the parameters that we were under, putting this together, with 1, 2, and 3 family rental units, we were going to break in with that and not, not jump into the 4 and up, which is going to put us into a workload issue.
Okay, all right. I'll accept that.
And I don't know if the number of...
I'll serve that, I'll be pragmatic.
I wasn't sure if the chairman of this committee was aware that John Cheetham, Safeville, who's the regional manager, was here this evening to talk about this and to help answer some of those questions, so...
How do you add it?
Yeah, thank you, come on up.
Come on up.
So I'm basically here to answer your questions. What I did, I put some of these together before for other communities, and I did, in conjunction with Blood, Pat, Tim, several others in the administration had requested, I addressed only 1, 2, and 3 family for now, and then knowing that 4 and up will come later, possibly the first of next year, and what I did was, I took language that's in similar communities, and this is what, maybe the third or fourth draft to get to this point, and I started out with language that was in similar communities to you, and then kind of customized it to their questions, their concerns, to where I finally came up with the draft that they felt was something that wouldn't cause heartburn, and that would address the issue of life safety and safe and sanitary for an...
Absolutely. I mean, I didn't have any side of that, those were the only two comments I had.
Okay, right. So the smoke and fire, yeah, you wanted that to be a little more pronounced, okay, so I made note of that. And then, what was your comment on the building or unit?
Well, it's been clarified, Patrick clarified it for me, because we're all here with 1, 2, and 3, and if we're coming back, then that's fine.
And the fees are aligned with other communities' arse size?
Yeah, actually, I think your fees are actually a little on the lower side.
Okay.
But we discussed that length, we discussed that length, and decided to start a little low, and then if later you want to do a fee increase, a year, two, five years down the road, you may.
Okay.
But they're a little lower, yes, sir.
When you talk about fees, who are you comparing it to?
I actually compared it to a number of communities. I looked through, I got on the ordinances of a lot of cities, so I got some in the Stark County area, I got some in, more down towards Dublin, that area, of Metro Plumus, some in Metro Cleveland, so I just, I cannot tell you specifically that I looked at Maple Heights or Hudson or Dublin or Oberland, but I just looked at a lot, got a consensus that here's the window, you know, on the low side, 50, on the high side, 250, for a single family. And then, you know, I put you in, and then Patrick said, "Why, could you lower this a little more?", and so we got the rubber after that.
So when I look at this, I think it's high, but I want to know what the purpose of that is, are we here to make money out of it, or are we here to look at these to be safe and inspect? And when I start looking at fees that are high, 50 bucks, 100 cents, easy, anybody would want to register, but when you start getting up there into the higher fees, then that's when these renters start, landlords and all that, really start putting up their arms and everything, so what's the purpose of getting back to all this, or doing this for it?
We're going to get asked.
Okay, so on the page under purpose, parentheses D, do you have that in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay, "The purpose is the intent of the North Canton City Council by the adoption of this ordinance to hold all property owners and agents to the same standard. Secondly, the fees collected shall be used exclusively for funding and administering the implementation in perpetuity of the rental registration process and the inspections conducted, and the purpose is to provide a safe and sanitary environment for the residents and their guests of all rental dwelling units." And this is very, very common, I know that you know, I don't know what happens in North Canton, what happens in the rest of the world, if you don't have oversight, you get slow wards, you get people that don't care, you get tenants that are afraid of retaliation if they, you know, complain about something, you get people with low or very little heat. I had one community that a lady called me from another state around, somewhere around Christmas, New Year, somewhere in that two or three week period, and said her parents were living in a rental, and that they had hardly any heat at all, I sent an inspector out, he went out there, and they were barely at 50 degrees, and they were covered in layers of clothes and all that. They had told their landlord, who was an upstanding citizen, well thought of in the community, repeatedly, and he was in the holiday spirit, and just not paying attention to the complaints, and saying, "I'll take care of it after the holidays." In his defense, he said he didn't really realize how cold it was, but on the other hand, he didn't care enough to drive four miles from where he lived to check it out. So this is the safety valve, for want of a better word, for your tenants that have landlords that either don't care, are too busy to take time, and we're the one that are going out there and checking to make sure everything's up, they've got hot water, they've got heat, they've got the smoke detectors, the fire detectors, and stuff like that.
How much work is that?
Would you do me a favor, under that purpose, actually up in 3, under B3, you've got, part of what we're trying to do is make sure that these properties comply with our property maintenance code, and would you reflect that again down under purpose? Because that is our purpose as well, is to make sure these properties meet our minimum.
Right, thank you. And that is, let me just reference real quick, or maybe you did in 3, 170106?
Yes.
That does state, yes, but I will reiterate, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Listen, this has been a long time coming, Miriam, Melanie, and the audience, Ron Woodton, different individuals, we've been working on this, and I am ecstatic that it's finally...
it's finally come to council, and hopefully there's four or more votes to support this, because this is something that's essential to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods. And when you look at a rental unit, a hundred dollar fee, and I believe that would be a yearly fee, is that correct?
Yes, yearly, yes.
Would that involve a yearly inspection?
Yes.
And then, then there's also complaint inspection process too. That's only eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month. Come on, that table goes up more than a month. And then you get into two units, three units, that price drops to six and a quarter per unit for a two unit, and five fifty-three for a three unit. And if you can't afford those, then get out of rental vision, North Canton. It's that simple. We have a great city to live in, and if you wanna be a landlord or a landlord here, you need to make sure that your property's up to codes, and you pay a minimum fee to ensure that our inspectors arrive and take care of anything that's not up to code, as far as just basic health standards, and what anybody else would wanna live in, and that's not a stretch. And if we don't do this now, we are going to look down the road and regret the possibility we have now that other cities are struggling to get through. Our neighbors are dealing with this now, and we can't afford to let any more time pass before we make sure that we have inspectors who are qualified to go in these homes, and make basic inspections, basic necessity utilities, just living standards. We're not asking this to be a Taj Mahal, we're just asking it to be up to a decent living code, and I don't think that's, that's much to ask for here, especially at those prices. I applaud the administration, everybody that's been involved with this, thank you. I hope this council has the wisdom to pass this. To me, you know, obviously it should be a three reading process, for anything we might have left out, but I just, I just hope that we have it someplace by, say, midsummer, or whenever the clear readings take, and we can move forward. So thank you for your efforts, thank you for your experience, and this was a big part of why we wanted you in here. Because you've got a track record with this, and it's a proven track record, and I applaud you, looking at other communities, and we probably are low, but I'm okay with this restructuring.
No, it's good.
We gotta break it in, let people know.
Can you talk to the administration about it?
Yes, so, so thank you. Now, one thing, the one time early registration is set up, is that just this year, or is that made place every year? And the reason I say that is, I think there is some merit that you don't get inundated with how many rentals we have, I'm not quite sure, but we're gonna find out. You don't get them all at one time, so I think as long as you can handle the volume, but when they should be coming in, I think that is a process to look at.
That was part of the design process, that we wanted it to be a twelve month certificate, so you buy the property today, let's say a new one, and you get the inspection, and you're good for twelve months. We didn't wanna do what some other communities have, where everything starts January first.
Correct.
And then you got staggered, it's too much, you know, and we should say that, if I can summarize it well, but I mean, you know, one of the early concerns on this when I first started and talking with the Director of Law on this, was that, you know, he had shown me some case law that had indicated that, you know, if you are gonna do this program, you're not gonna provide a service. That's a problem.
Right.
And a lot of communities try to do that. So no, this is a process that has a service, and I think we're in a position where we got to that comfort level now, where we have somebody here that we can depend upon to do it, as opposed to where we had before. I actually looked at a bunch of other communities, and I knew Mark would, would ask that question, so as part of that, I told him where to search geographically, that, you know, we liken ourselves to, you know, to Dublin or Hudson, we think of ourselves in those terms, but we still have to take into account what is happening in our community, in Canton, in Nassau, or whatever, but the idea was to try to hold this to a standard. I know you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I think this is really good legislation. I'm glad you're putting it together, because really what it does, it protects the tenant, it also protects the property owner. Because oftentimes, you could have property owners that don't even live in town, maybe live out of state. This could be as a portfolio where they own fifty, sixty, you know, a hundred homes. And oftentimes, like you had mentioned, it could be due to the property owner's lack of knowledge or communication. But, and so not only protects the tenant and the property owner, but then the neighbors, and then, you know, the community asset, which is each home. So I think it's excellent, very good job.
Are we expecting to have to hire any inspectors, because this is a great program, but if we can't keep up with it, then that defeats the purpose too.
So the way a state don't works in a community, we provide as much as the activity requires. I feel that right now, implementing this in the latter part of the year, I won't have to hire anyone else, but I've already had that discussion, both with Marty as a local CBO, also with Pat and some others, that if we see right away we need another inspector, part-time, full-time, we'll add it. We will make care of it. Let me ask you this too, 'cause I believe going back in my, when we have an out of town owner, are we requiring the property manager to be accessible to this community? We do have a problem with rental. And the reason I say that is, if you do have somebody in California or out of state, you can't get a whole home, we need somebody to be in charge of this property, so we don't just send letters out or send fines out, and it's a long-standing process. It doesn't hit us anywhere in a quick fashion. I'm looking at to have them require, to have somebody locally that can address these issues, whatever they might be doing inspection. Have you seen any of this as far as the... I have seen that in some hiring communities. It's not real common, but it's, it's something you could all discuss and come to consensus on. It's not in this legislation, I would need to add that if you wanted to look at that, which what I'm gonna do is find some language and... I'd prefer if you could do the answer, thank you, because I think it's, it's almost a necessity that we have somebody that can answer our questions, and be immediately accessible to us within a, you know, you know, a timeframe that's, that you can work with, but not just send letters, or nobody respond, and you got four residents there living, you know, in a rental unit, without any availability to move forward with improvements, or to have contractors hired. And that's not unreasonable. I know, I, I used to own rentals myself, I know currently, but I know a lot of people that do, and more and more of them are finding it to get someone like Dominic, or those, to firm the magic. My son owns some rentals now, up in a Cleveland suburb, and he lives in Medina, he owns them, I think, in Parma, I'm not sure where. And he hired a realtor that manages them, so he's not involved, and that's not a high fee, it's a very small percentage. I looked through a contract for him, so it's not unreasonable to ask that, that if they're not a local person, that they have a local management company. But it's, as far as statistically, it's not a great percentage that do require it, but some do.
Okay.
But I can definitely look in.
I would assume what we're going to do is, in the absence of a local manager, we would not grant an occupancy permit, correct? So it's not designated, what's the, what's the state?
And the common law is gonna show you that you're gonna be limited to, that this local person be either in a county or within a contiguous county. You wouldn't be able to...
Let me reword it again. If a property owner, a landlord does not have, the owner does not have that designated, who's local, or be defined, he does not receive an occupancy permit, the property does not have an occupancy permit, is that, is that what we're asking?
Well, you have to have an enforcement language in here, or it's, you know, I'm not going to... Yeah, I'll look at, I'll look at the wording of other ordinances that are similar, and then offer you some language to look at. Tim can compare it down, or Pat, or whomever, or you guys, but I'll look at something, but definitely you have to have a way to enforce that.
Alright, alright, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have this back in two weeks, or our next meeting, with some new language, and here we'll, I'm sure, entertain comments from our constituents.
I would, I would just add two points. One, that I know that the law director had constantly on that I would wanna add, but, you know, I'm giving you just, you know, you mentioned it's been a long time coming, and sometimes you have to crawl forward, walk, and it seems that some of the reach that you're going for is sprinting, and you would really like this to launch and to launch successfully, so I would ask you to just keep that in mind. But as far as the enforcement mechanism, we still have to meet with the Stark County Auditor, and talk to him about whether or not, you know, the preferred method that we would choose to enforce this is available to us, or if we have to choose a different method. So it's a matter of whether it's a criminal or a civil statute that we have to pursue, and we are gonna be seeking counsel from this Stark County Auditor, on what they're willing to do.
Essentially what this is, they call it special assessments, and I've been looking for those, because what it entails is simply if there isn't compliance, there's an administrative fine, and if the administrative fine is not paid, if you can convince your county auditor to place this as a special assessment, it's simply added to the property card, and when the property changes hands, or when their taxes are due, this assessment is there. There's nothing more to do, much like our leads in Hyland's program. Give them an opportunity to resolve it, opportunity to appeal, and if they don't comply, it's a special assessment that we turn over twice a year to the auditor's office. Now, I've been looking for this, because I know our auditor has turned down some of these for communities that haven't done their homework, and proven that these type of special assessments are unique, they have to show a value to the community. And so we'll have to clearly write in the benefit that's gonna be derived from having these ordinance, these safety and health inspections, and what we should do is our homework, and meet with them, and see if we're able to do this. I have seen that Summit County authorize this type of special assessment for these rental registrations, because if you don't have this enforcement arm, the problem that you have is that courts view this as such a de minimis type of action, that you're not likely to get traction in a criminal action, and so then you're limited to bringing this as a civil action for a hundred dollar fines, and it may not be worth your while, so we're gonna do our very best to demonstrate the benefit that our community is going to derive from this, and try to work with Allen Harold's office to see if we can't get this in a form that we could do as a special assessment.
Let's find some tea.
Yes.
Take that.
Time for the rip.
Let the record reflect, Peters and Fonte have rejoined, and moving on to personnel safety, we have a discussion concerning potential golf cart legislation. Two or three weeks ago, we had a gentleman come up, he had a golf cart out back, showed you what he had, what he had done to it, and the inspections and benchmarks he had to meet that were Stark County Sheriff and State Highway Patrol. Anyways, right now, currently, our, our ordinance do not allow for slow-moving vehicles, and he asked if I would, if I would put this on for discussion. Chief Benak is here, I asked him to come tonight to give us his, his view on this, and so John, if you wouldn't mind coming up here. We had a discussion earlier this week, and there was some things that, that I didn't think about when we first, when I first decided to put this on, so if you, just kinda give us your thoughts, in order to view on, on what you feel about the slow-moving vehicle.
I'm not inclined to support it. What the state actually did was rescinded their blanket prohibition about these vehicles on the state's roads, but they put the burden on each individual community to pass legislation to allow it. Along with that, there's a supposition that those communities would perform inspections, and refer those people to the MV, the license plates for vehicles that, the passing inspection. I don't feel comfortable in saying that a particular golf cart is safe to operate on the streets. The sheriff, I believe, is doing some of the inspections, the state patrol is not doing inspections. They're not gonna do them. I would just question the value of this legislation to the majority of the residents, and, you know, other people that use the community, pass through the community. One of the biggest activities for my group of people is addressing traffic complaints, traffic issues, crashes, noise, you know, a multitude of things. And putting another type of vehicle in the mix of traffic that we already have, I can only see it generating more problems. Now, if there's only one or two, granted, it may not be a lot of problems, but if it's more, it's gonna be more. And if it's only one or two, how many people are gonna have to deal with that vehicle every day versus just the convenience for that one person to be able to operate that?
Chief. One thing, if you don't mind, then one thing you brought up to, and I tend to consequence in that, was that you can't differentiate. Say, say we as a collective said, okay, yeah, golf carts are fine, but that also allows four-wheelers, you know, gators, whatever, whatever you call them, to be on our roads, you know, to come right out, you know, they're out blocking, come right out of our streets.
And you may, you may be able to tailor the legislation specifically to target certain things, but some of those vehicles actually are allowed by state code to cross roads. I know you had mentioned like the school, if they wanted to, and you just wanted to go from the school building to the stadium lot, or something like that. They can already do that. We don't need to pass this legislation to open up use of the streets, just to allow somebody like that, like a guard at Hoover's. I think the thing with the golf carts has come about because of some planned developments, where you have a small contained area of residents, usually probably like a retirement community, where, no, the streets aren't private, but it would look like typically a private allotment, and they wanna use those types of vehicles. Previously, that was outlawed by the state code, so obviously there's enough pressure, they backed away from that, but we're not that type of community. Those vehicles are limited to twenty miles an hour, and the state code says that they cannot operate on roads with a speed limit of greater than thirty-five. Well, that's a big discrepancy. You know, we have a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit on Everard, and if you went through our traffic citations, you'll find people down there going in the mid-fifties or better, and you're gonna throw something out there that can only go twenty. Same thing with Main Street, Schneider, you know, Apple Grove, and I just question the judgment there, and they're not gonna hold up like the car doesn't crash either.
They're made for golf courses, they're not made for our, for our streets.
Chief, my father-in-law has, I think it's a three-wheeler actually, it's like electric, it has blinkers and everything, so he's eighty-five, and he rides it from his little condo in Fredericksburg down, I don't know if he rides it in the street or the sidewalk, I'm not sure.
And you're talking about like one of those personal mobility things?
Yeah, kinda like that.
Those are different, I think it's a sidewalk.
It's kind of a hybrid of that, and then he takes it to the Y, does his exercising, rides it back.
On the sidewalks, or?
I don't know. I was just, it made me think about it when you said that.
Well, those are classified as pedestrian anyway.
Okay.
A golf cart is gonna be considered a vehicle where they can use it.
This is for street use.
Yeah, I just think it sounds a little risky, we should have like golf courses.
So what do you do with a lot that says have a pool, when people think it's in the neighborhood?
I think if you go on swimmin', you should be able to walk to the pool. I don't know.
So, do we need to really have a discussion about this?
No.
Something we're ever gonna...
Well, he asked if I'll bring it to council, I said I would.
Yeah, I, I had done quite a bit of research looking at...
Yeah, I had done quite a bit of research looking at communities that have this, and often you find this, as the chief had said, these are planned communities where they use these to get back and forth to a recreation center, activity center, and they're generally just not traveling on the main roads. Especially when you're on these two-lane roads, where if you have, if you're the car that's behind this, and it's in the center of the lane, you're going to have to go around it. And if you go around it, and it's a double line, you're not permitted to pass it. And imagine you're driving that automobile that the other person was willing to take that chance and use a golf cart as their mode of transportation. And if you clip it, if you caused the accident because you passed it, because you were impatient, and that would just be a terrible situation that you find yourself in, cars lined up because of this one that's doing twenty miles an hour, and you're having to wait to pass it. The other criteria for the overall city is if, I imagine if the city passed legislation and authorized the use of these, that we would have more serious accidents. And maybe not more accidents, but the accidents would be more severe. There's arguments to be made, as much like motorcycles, indeed, but motorcycles will generally travel at a much faster speed than golf carts.
That's the whole key, is the low speed, which is, it actually, quotation specifies that in the sheriff's inspection. So, okay.
Thank you. Suffice to say, council is not in favor of moving forward with this.
Not in favor.
Chief, thank you for your comment.
Thanks.
I appreciate it. Chief.
Yeah, Chris Powell's father, or grandfather passed away. He has, he would have just a quick moment of silence, and anytime anybody asks that, it would be an issue. Absolutely not.
Call, right?
Call last night, right?
Yep.
So the moment is amend the call, instead of calling.
Okay.
Amen?
Amen.
Thank you.
Pass it on.
Pass it on, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. Freddie Knutson?
We were looking to just take the two-minute, do I need to, do we need to amend the agenda for a two-minute discussion on a matter of the history of municipal?
Of course.
This is classified as a special committee meeting, but I will say this, in our ordinance, our ordinance allows us for the first, third, and fifth Monday.
So not special, special?
Mr. Osborne, right, and I believe this is not a special committee. Actually, I won't classify it, even though it's highlighted, it's per our rules. It's not a special council meeting, so yes. Motion to amend the agenda.
Motion is second to amend the law, Pat.
Move out second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Can push carry.
I'm just going to go home, because the meeting's going to end, right?
Oh, yeah, you guys can't be here.
So, shall we leave or sit back there?
We got forward to. That's two minutes. We got forward.
Do a jury.
But you guys have to get out of room.
Well, even.
Hold on, I'm getting kicked out a lot lately.
Well, that's, yeah.
All right, Patrick, floor's yours.
I just wanted to let the council know that we did receive, you know, a few submissions for the request proposal on the municipal golf course. We are in the process of interviewing those applicants. We should finish that in the next two or three days, this will for sure. And then, once that process is finished, we will come back to council with a full report of where we're at. But I wanted to just kind of get a little sense of it, if you wouldn't mind, of timing, on that it's possible, depending on the outcome of who is chosen, that we may need an option for an interim agreement until a contract can be finalized. We want the final contract to go through the legislative process that we have. To do that, we may need to have an option to do an interim agreement, an interim management agreement, in the event that, depending on who's chosen. So I just wanted to see if that's something that the council would support, administration going that direction, given the.
Patrick, I think the reason being, because we talked about so much with the groups, the rationale behind this is that you don't want a gap. In that if the current one is not chosen, the current one's chosen, there's a gap. But if it's not chosen, then there's going to be this transition period. And I think that's what this gap filler type of contract would be, to make sure that the weddings, and the graduations, and the golf, and other functions is covered through a transition.
That was all I wanted to.
All right, Jeff.
So Darryl and Jim.
I'm okay with it, I'm just looking at the list of schedule here, so.
Well, on the interim side, this would be a matter that would be well below the threshold that we would have to come to council to get.
Okay, you don't need council met again.
But I don't want to do, outbreak the dark, I want the council to get aware, so is that?
So that's really what Patrick's asking for, is that they're going through the companies that have turned their proposals, depending on what the outcome is, and what decision is made with Patrick, and Kathy, and Lauren, and Tim, as they're reviewing this, and other members of council, and all that, that, you know, will have to be prepared to have an interim, possibly have the option of interim management agreement. Which what Patrick's asking for is just a voice vote in support of that. We don't need council met action, but we just, he wants to make sure that he's keeping everybody apprised.
Got it.
And that he has the support to move ahead with this.
And we're keeping the facility open, honoring the night tracks, you know, golf leagues everywhere. That's the main objective.
My vote, a voice vote, authorize the administration, errant to interim contract below the.
Normal bid.
Normal bid requirement.
Come on. Is there a section? Second. Member Warren?
Yes.
Member Folt?
Yes.
Member Folt?
Yes.
Peter's votes, yes? Okay, then, votes do a jury?
Do a jury, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They are a jury. They said, free ask me, everybody.